I'd like to call this meeting of the Brooklyn City Council to order. Mary Jo, can you please call the roll?
Meg Ryan Chaki.
Here.
Andy Salhertz.
Here.
Kathy Pucci.
Here.
Aaron Borowski.
Here.
Kevin Tansky.
Absent excuse.
Sigrotic.
Absent excused.
Ron Van Kirk.
Absent excused. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and then stay standing for a quick moment of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the letter of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hand.
Thank you. We do have minutes to approve from the May 23 meeting. Anybody on council have comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve the minutes, Meg Ryan Chaki.
Yes.
Andy Salhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Borowski.
Yes.
I'm going to turn it over to the mayor for a proclamation and swearing in.
I'd like to invite out Jenna Young, your parents, your coaches, the athletic director to come on up here for a proclamation.
We couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me?
No. On the inside, on the side.
A little bit. Hold on.
What's that?
Was my voice any help?
I'd say so.
I guess I just have to speak now. Okay, Jenna, when's the last time you were here? Was it a year ago? So we're here to honor Jenna Young. She is the HSA Division Two Girls High Jump State Champion, first for the Brooklyn School District. On June 3rd, she was named that for jumping incredible 5'7", having a new record for the Brooklyn High School. Jenna's the state championship winning the jump. It was a culmination of one of the most impressive seasons in Brooklyn's history. Jenna was not defeated in high jump at a single week this season, with her jumps ranking among the top 50 girls in the entire country. Jenna received the following track and field awards and honors this season: First Team All-Conference High Jump, First Team All-Conference Hunter hurdles, Second Team All-Conference Long Jump, CBC Metro Division Field Event MVP, Doug Amari Field Event MVP, District Champion District Record High Jump, Regional Qualifier Long Jump and Hunter hurdles, and was the varsity girls MVP. So congratulations Jenna on your amazing season and making Brooklyn proud. And I know Mr. Becker wanted to say a few words, do you want to come up?
So about a year ago today, I heard I had a pretty good high jumper. And I didn't really, I didn't really know. And you don't really know until you see it. And what I saw the first time I saw her jump was a very talented and especially young lady. And through all of her accolades, and to watch what you have done, Jenna is truly remarkable. And it couldn't have happened to a better young lady than I just watched you do that. So I'm very proud of you, and so is the city. You did a wonderful job.
Not only do I have this proclamation, I don't know if you've noticed, on Hurricane Alley today, they put up a sign for you. And we do have a sign for you to take home to you, or maybe from your college door, or wherever you want to go. Do you want to take a picture?
Let's go.
You have to hold it up. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you. Give her a round. Morley, you want to call up your family? Next I have to honor a swearing in a new police officer to our course, Morley Brennan-Stall. Morley is a Brooklyn kid, so he's coming back to Brooklyn to work, and we're proud of him. And today was his first day, so we want to make sure we got him sworn in. Do you want to raise your right hand? I say your name.
I am Morley Brennan-Stall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Ohio.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
The Charter and ordinances of the city of Brooklyn.
I know faithfully.
I know faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially discharge.
And impartially discharge.
My duties as a patrol officer.
My duties as a patrol officer.
In the city of Brooklyn.
The city of Brooklyn.
According to the best of my abilities, my understanding.
According to the best of my abilities, my understanding.
Congratulations. Thank you to the shift for coming out and supporting Morley on his first day.
That was a great way to start the meeting. At this time, we will have the public session. If anyone in the audience has anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, please step forward, state your name and address, and you will be recognized. Please remember to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
My name's Don McMahon, 9515 Memphis. I made it to the last meeting, and I left before the mayor got done with me. So I'm sorry about that. But I was, she said that I lost my case in karma, that I had the city get against me. The only one that's been brought up on charge is for a gravel parking lot. I brought up a poster here today to show you all. This right here is her campaign finance.
We, we are not going to allow campaign information in the public session.
Public record.
And people can go and get the information themselves.
I break proof. You're taking in my five minutes. I appreciate it if you did. This is the two judges.
If you're breaking the laws of council, then I am able to cut you off from your comment.
That's not a law of council, is it? Listen, long story short, I brought proof. That would be like Rob Slavert being my judge. I'm not going to get found guilty. They are her friends. It's an appeals court. Now I'll tell you how appeals court works. You're a lawyer, right? You might have slept through this class, but let me explain to you how appeals court works. The case isn't over when it's in appeals court. You might have slept through that, because I don't think we ever tried a case. In appeals court, if she beats me, then I might take it to a higher court. It's a misdemeanor. The money doesn't bother me. I didn't need these people's money. There's a lot of people on here. You know, she called my tenant Puerto Rican. He's Honduras. She called him colored.
Wait.
Let me tell you this.
No, I'm, I'm.
Off the internet, off the internet. People of color often used to refer to. Did she call him colored? This is not fair.
No, we are, we are not, we are not going to discuss this again. You have been told once at the last meeting.
What am I doing wrong? I'm telling you what she said. I'm repeating what she said.
Mr. McMahon, please.
No, please, tell me what I'm doing wrong.
You are bringing in personalities into this conversation.
She brought up mine last week, that she was getting sick and tired of me on the, watch the meeting after I left.
I sit in every meeting on council.
She said I was making racist remarks, and then her, her, uh, her, uh, her committee goes over.
If you have something to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn, you can.
It is. I don't want this city labeled as racist. Okay, I don't want them labeled as racist. And she invited all yous into this, and it's not you guys, it's her.
I'm not sure you're watching the same meeting.
What's that?
I said, I'm not sure you're watching the same meeting.
I watched it again today before I came here. Did you say colored people?
Okay, we are not going to have back and forth. Please, we are not going to have back and forth, mayor.
Because you don't like what I'm saying?
Please, no, it has nothing to do about what you're saying.
She said I was making comments of it being racist.
Mr. McMahon, do you have anything else to add for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn?
I just, I do what if she can call me racist and I can't say that?
We are not bringing personalities into this.
There's not a personality in here. She brought.
Mr. McMahon, please.
She said Mr. McMahon at the last meeting. You look at it. You look at it.
I sit and I listen to these meetings. I watch these meetings.
I'm trying to explain this to you.
And when you are breaking council rules.
I'm not, what's a council rule?
An acting president, I am able, you are, you are creating disturbance, and I am able to escort you out to the meeting, so if you have anything else to add.
Oh, let's go. Chuck me out of here, let's go. Come on. You're going to scorch me out? Let's go. This is full. She entered a last meeting. Look at her smile. She made you go. Don't touch me.
I'm not touching you.
I'm afraid of it. I don't know. I really don't want to go.
I don't know why you're afraid of me, but.
Yeah, I'll be back at the next one, and we'll go get through this again. I thank you all, but you see what it is. It's freedom of speech.
If there's council rules that you have to implement when you're doing a public session.
You know where to step.
And that is exactly where you're being escorted out.
Wait a minute, I am out. Yeah, you said you can walk me to the door. Let's go. At least pay me a little attention, come on.
Rob Slavert, 6600, we started Friday. It's now been 36 days since the council member asked for a safety meeting about the staffing of the fire department. This council passes issues on emergency measure on a daily, on a weekly basis. The reason for three readings for councils, for the council to complete due diligence on the topics and allow taxpayers to write to speak for or against an item. This council ignores this on a regular basis. The Oxford Dictionary of Emergencies is a serious, unexpected, or often dangerous situation requiring immediate action. Most of things passed here are not in true emergency. Not having enough firefighters is to protect the city is a true emergency. Due to lack of staffing, you will have firefighters in charge with little or no experience in supervisory roles during the prime vacation times, which is right now. Those firefighters will be forced to make split-second life and death decisions. This will result in getting, this is a result of getting rid of those lieutenant positions. The fire department has been short 88% of the shifts over the last three years. How would you like it if you go into work to work your shift, and there's an 88% chance you're going to get forced over to a double shift? Our firefighters are tired and are beat down. We need to show that we have their backs. Per the firefighter contract, Section 3601, "In the interest of solid labor management relations, unless mutually agreed otherwise, twice each year on a mutually agreed upon day and time, not more than four representatives of the city and four representatives of the union shall meet to discuss the pending problems and to promote more harmonious labor management relationship." When's the last time this happened? Per the firefighter contract, the firefighters may refuse to be, take the man in charge pay by submitting a letter of intent. What, what is the city's plan if more people submit that? You're not going to leave anybody be in charge. Per the contract, the firefighters are responsible for major snowplowing, landscaping, lawn care, and weed control at the fire department. Don't we have a service department to do that? These are, these are professional firefighters, and we have them doing landscaping. And I've seen it. I've driven by them. They're out there. And they do it because they're direct to. I believe that it's hypocritical when the mayor mentions her father, her sister, and her uncle as being firefighters for the city, and they all benefited from the very staffing that your firefighters are begging for today.
Does anybody else have anything to say for the good and welfare of the city of Brooklyn? At this time, we'll move on with committee, commission, and board reports. We will start with the legislative update by Councilmember Borowski.
Thank you. My legislative update tonight revolves around the issue of conceal and carry. But it's actually not about guns. This one is about knives. In the House and the Senate of Ohio, Senate Bill 156 has passed and may be on its way to the governor for a signature of approval or veto. The bill would allow Ohioans, if signed into law, to carry an array of concealed non-firearm weapons like billy clubs, butterfly knives, and switchblades. The Senate passed this bill to ensure that Ohio cities don't try to pass legislation of their own on the local level, as well as blocking cities from enacting any laws related to transporting, possessing, carrying, and/or the selling, buying, or gifting of said knives. The legislation, however, is vulnerable under the Home Rule Amendment to the Ohio Constitution. We'll have to wait and see how it finally plays out, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. The committee of the whole met prior to the council meeting, as we do before every council meeting. Today, we discussed Resolution 2022-22, creating the opioid settlement advisory task force to provide guidance on appropriate uses of settlement proceeds from the National Opioid Litigation. Resolution 2022-23, which is on second reading tonight, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2023. A new business on tonight's agenda, including two ordinances regarding NOPEC. Ordinance 2022-16, approving the plan of operation and governance for the NOPEC Natural Gas Aggregation Program for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing a gas aggregation program as a NOPEC member and declaring an emergency. And ordinance 2022-17, authorizing all actions necessary to establish an opt-in natural gas program pursuant to Section 4929.27A1 of Ohio Revised Code, jointly through NOPEC as a NOPEC member. Ordinance 2022-18, authorizing the mayor to grant easement to the city of Cleveland for the installation of a water meter vault necessary to supply water to the city center project. And finally, ordinance 2022-19, amending Section 1519.04 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances entitled, Possession, Sale, or Discharge Prohibited Exceptions and Declaring Emergency. And that last one is regarding fireworks. It is only on first reading tonight. It is amending the legislation that we did pass after more talk from the building department and the safety directors. The thought of the permits just seems difficult both to, to regulate and to do regarding who's shooting off the firework versus the household where it's being shot off? How do you take that into consideration? There was also talk about the first aid kit and the, the safety brochure that we had talked about. The law director did bring up that Ohio law does regulate that fireworks bought within the state of Ohio do need to give a safety brochure at that time as well. And so that would cover that portion of the ordinance. But we did have a little bit of discussion about this, and we'll be potentially talking about it more at the next meeting, because we are missing three council people tonight. And that was everything for committee of the whole today. Just a reminder, we do meet before every regularly scheduled council meeting. Next up is the planning commission, Mayor Gallagher.
Thank you. We have a special planning commission Tuesday, June 21st. We'll have two requests. One, a conditional use request for urgent care clinic in retail business district for a Well Now Urgent Care at 4630 Ridge Road, permanent parcel 423-23014, and a preliminary site plan approval for the Well Now Urgent Care at 4630 Ridge Road.
Next up is the Public Safety and Environmental Committee. There will be a joint meeting between the Public Safety and Environmental and Finance Committees before the next regularly scheduled council meeting on June 27th at 5:30. We did look to meet before the last council meeting, and we had gotten questions that the administration did not have enough time to get everything together. And then tonight, as you can see, we're missing three council people, so we felt this was best when everybody would be able to attend the meetings. So again, June 27th at 5:30, there will be a joint Public Safety and Environmental Committee and Finance Committee to discuss fire staffing. Next up is the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mayor Gallagher.
Sure. There are two Board of Zoning Appeals. One is a regular and one is a special. The regular one is June 16th. It's a request from Melissa Vidal for a variance for eight foot to the required minimum of 10 feet from the side locked lines for a swimming pool at 8909 Memphis Villas Boulevard. A request from Schramm Signs for an additional internally illuminated wall sign to the allowable one for crumble cookie at 7323 North Cliff. A request from Schramm Signs for an additional 140 square foot window graphic to cover the stockroom windows for crumble cookie at 7323 North Cliff. A request from Dale and Cindy Bedraw for a variance of 18 inches to the minimum of two feet from the public right of way at 4736 Ridge Road, permanent parcel 43307019. And lastly, a request from Steven Lewinsky for a five foot six inches variance from the required minimum of 15 feet from the adjacent residential structure at 4168 Spring Crest. And then there is another special meeting on June 21st for a request from Senso Incorporated for a 25 foot variance to the required 30 foot front yard depth for the Well Now Urgent Care at 4630 Ridge Road. Thank you.
The Domestic Abuse Commission, June 15th is Elder Abuse Awareness Day. Elder abuse is more than just physical abuse of senior citizens or those that are young at heart. Elder abuse includes financial, physical, and emotional abuse, as well as self-neglect. The Ohio Department of Aging is encouraging Ohioans to wear purple on June 15th and every Wednesday in June to help raise awareness of elder abuse. Throughout the pandemic, we saw isolation in many who are categorized as high risk, including those who are over the age of 60. One other action that I'm asking again for residents to participate in, as well as the Domestic Abuse Commission, is to take, around Elder Abuse Awareness Day, is to take the time to write a letter or give a phone call to a young at heart person, friend, relative, neighbor, that you haven't seen in a while. One small act can go a long way, and I know it's been very difficult on a lot of, a lot of people in general, but especially those who, who are older and who might feel alone during this time. So please make sure that you reach out and, you know, put a smile on someone's face. And finally, we have the school board liaison, Councilwoman Pucci.
Thank you. Good evening. The school board met on June 7th and addressed the following items on their agenda. There was a presentation for the treasures report on the Ohio checkbook. They approved minutes and financial statements. They had commendations for the class of 2022, and this was the honors graduates and the top 10%. They entered into an agreement with school transportation for the 2223 school year, an agreement with fast-track auctioneers, so that they're able to auction unneeded equipment, and agreement with Educational Services Center of Northeast Ohio for the placement of five students, an agreement with the Cleveland Clinic Learner School of Autism, an agreement with Capital Aluminum and Glass for a new entrance door at the high school, at the band room entrance. They approved collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters Local 436, and this covers the classified employees, and this begins this July and runs through June 30th of 2025. They had various resolutions dealing with hiring and resignations and supplementals. They had a renewal of the property fleet and liability insurance. They accepted a donation to the Sean Arsino Scholarship Fund, and they had a discussion on a consent agenda. And then finally, there was a resolution to place on the November ballot, the renewal levy for 6.8 mils for five years. The next school board meeting is Monday, so that's a change, on June 20th at 6:00 PM, Room 173. Thank you.
We will now move on to reports of council. We will start this evening with Councilman Salhertz.
Thank you. Good evening. Congratulations to Jenna Young on being the state champion in Division Two Girls High Jump. There's just a lot of good things that happened in the schools. That is an example of one of them. It's nice to see some community spirit supporting her. Next fresh fruit, fruit and produce giveaway at St. Elias will be on Tuesday, June 28th. Starts at 3:30. Please don't arrive too early. We've got people that show up there like two hours before. If you want to sit there, fine, but it starts at 3:30. With Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, we've been doing cleanups. You can volunteer through volunteer.kab.org. You can put in a radius of five miles. You'll find a number of dates that we have available. Speaking of Keep Brooklyn Beautiful, thanks to Mr. Herr, the principal of Brooklyn High School. On May 31st, we had approximately 200-some-plus students. We did a number of sites throughout the city, individual homes and acres through the city, historical society, library. We did various projects. There's a community service day. Thank you to, once again, to Mr. Herr and all the students. And on this Friday, working with Keep Ohio Beautiful, we've got 42 people from Nestle's coming in to kind of give us a hand to keep things pretty in this town. So they're going to be working up at the historical society and a couple other locations within the city. So you'll see a number of people. I'm sure they'll have a banner or two that they're going to say, hey, we're here working. And one last thing, thank you to Mr. Verba on getting the high grass resolved on some of First Energy's property. That's been an issue with some of the restaurants that have their properties. They're joining First Energy's property. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pucci?
Thank you. First, congratulations to Jenna, her parents, family, and coaches, athletic directors, on her state championship. It, it really takes a lot to achieve at that high level. We've all been following her and her accomplishments, and I know that our entire community is very proud of all her efforts. Congratulations also to our newest officer, Bruen Stall. I wish him a very long, safe, and successful career with us here in Brooklyn. And just a note, Mr. Magus, for the joint Finance and Safety Committee meeting coming up, can you please start sending that information out this week to members? We need enough time to read, analyze, and, you know, if there's any other questions on the information you send. I think we need as much time as possible, since this is our last regularly scheduled meeting.
We understand that. That is our plan.
Okay, thank you. And I believe that completes my report. Thank you.
Councilman Borowski?
Thank you. I'd like to thank all those that were able to participate in the Memorial Day Parade, including Pastor Carl Etheridge, that led the community in prayer, and Officer Chris Frey, that gave a wonderful speech. And also, congratulations to Jenna Young. You've not only made it your family, coaches, friends, and teachers proud, but this community as well. You're a state champion. No one will ever be able to take that away from you. And also, congratulations to the newly sworn in officer this evening. And on my final note, tomorrow is Flag Day. Please remember to hang your American flags. And actually, our last, last thing is to all the fathers out there, please enjoy this Sunday. It's Father's Day. Enjoy it. That's my report.
Thank you. I just have two things to add. One is, we have, as Councilman Salhertz mentioned, had a couple of cleanups with Keep Brooklyn Beautiful since our last meeting in May. On June 5th, we met at Memorial Park, and we cleaned up around Memphis Avenue. On June 5th, we met at Memorial Park and we cleaned up around Memphis Avenue, Ridge Road, Memorial Park, and around the Recreation Center. And on June 11th, we met at Bidolph Plaza and cleaned up along Bidolph and Ridge Roads and the tree line between Dunning and Bidolph Plaza. We have had two new volunteers at every cleanup so far this year. So I'm hoping at our next cleanup on July 16th at Ridge Park Square to see returning faces, as well as two more new faces to join us as well. And then, one final thing, you know, regarding the fire staffing level, I know it was mentioned that it's, it's taken a while to get this on the agenda, but, you know, the fire staffing is something, and all staffing for all of our departments in the city of Brooklyn, is something we discuss every single year in this city. And we do get the information from our chiefs and our directors and we have budget work sessions that are held by Director Regus. And we talk about staffing for every department and to make sure that we both can make sure we're being fair to workers, as well as making sure that we are budgeting or working within our budget. We'd love to see more firefighters and police officers. We, we, you know, I hear all the time about police being in, in the city and, you know, having them on every street and checking for speeders. We'd love to have that. It's just not feasible. So we do talk about this every single year. It's not something that any of us up here take lightly and it's something that, you know, it was called to have this joint meeting, so we are having it. But I do want to say that it's, it's not neglected. It's not something that we just sit back and, and don't do anything on it. I know I've talked to several council people up here who have done their own independent research since this has been, since, quite honestly, the, the union started posting about it. And, you know, we're not just sitting back and waiting for a meeting. We are, you know, doing our due diligence and doing our research and, and making sure both, you know, we're, we're staffing at appropriate levels, but also we have the money because the last thing we want is to hire more firefighters and then to lay them off in a couple of years, say something happens, like the pending legislation at the state level about where people work from home, that money's not coming in here. We have a key bank that is still having a lot of people work from home. And so these are all decisions that, factors that need to be taken into this consideration and something that, you know, I, I just felt I needed to speak up on and say, this isn't something we take lightly and this is something that every single one of us up here cares about and is doing our due diligence to make sure that we're being fair, but also making sure we're not, you know, going over budget as well. So that ends my report. I will turn it over to the mayor for the mayor's report.
Thank you, Ms. Shaki. I just want to thank everyone who participated in the Memorial Day Parade and all the staff who organized and helped clean up the community for this special event. It was great being back for our ceremony after a two-year hiatus. And as Councilwoman Broowski said, I just want to give a shout out to our patrolman, Chris Fry. He had a wonderful speech. If you were there, if you didn't catch it in person, it's on our YouTube video. It was terrific. I know that I was tearing up listening to it. And then, you know, thank you to Pastor Carl Etheridge for the pedicure. He did a wonderful job as well. Our, our local VFW, as well as our terrific high school band who always does a great job. Thank you to Councilwoman Broowski, who worked with our service director and Bob Kapler to have a sign created over at our senior center designating a spot for veterans. So that will always be there. So thank you for calling that to attention. We always love little projects like that that we may miss. So thank you, Councilwoman Broowski. I want to thank Superintendent Caleres. I attended the state of the schools. A lot of good things going on in the school, a lot of things that he's looking to progress. One area that they're looking to specifically call out that I found interesting, given our labor shortages currently, is 47% of this outgoing class, and this is self-reported, by the way, so this isn't a, you know, fine tune, this is what the seniors are reporting, 47% of the class was going to a two- or four-year college. 20% had, was going right to the workforce and the remaining was getting an apprenticeship or some kind of specialized degree or going to a police or fire academy. So they're really looking to take a dent on that 20%, making sure that the children who are graduating from the high school have a good long-term plan for their life, that if they go out to the workforce, maybe that there's a long-term plan to get some kind of certificate or apprenticeship or something, so to make sure that, that they have things to fall back on if, you know, going out into the workforce or bouncing back in some kind of way eventually. So they've been working with Ohio Means Job and they were going to have a presentation with them and workforce development is going to be a priority. With all the open jobs in manufacturing right now in this area and frankly, jobs in every field IT, now is the time to make sure that our seniors are graduating, that they're gainfully employed, and they're going on to produce really quality lives for themselves for the future. So I applaud him and his staff for working towards that. Ridge Road construction, we have a tentative schedule and I just, I want to make sure that, you know, this is tentative. Right now, the, we're planning to start, the county will plan to start July 15th. And this will only be for the resurfacing from Brook Park to Pearl on the west side of the road. And then there'll be, that's just resurfacing and then there'll be a full-depth repair from North Cliff to Brook Park on the west side. They will stop work in mid-November and then start back up in the spring to do the east portion of all of that side. So it is going to be tied up for a while. There are certain mode of transportation issues there where sidewalks will be closed on certain sides. The egress and ingress of 480 will be closed for short periods of time, preferably during the off-hours to accommodate the construction throughout that corridor where 480 and Ridge Road intersect. A couple events going on in the city, I just want to call out Funk Algae will be playing in our park. They have a smoothie truck coming out as well, 7:00 PM next Wednesday. The garage sale, you need to register for the community garage sale by this Friday. You can go right onto the website or call City Hall and we'll register you. It is June 24th, 25th, 26th, but you have to sign up by this Friday in order to get your information out there. And then lastly, I'll be having a community gathering up here in the Grand Pavilion on June 29th at 6:30, just giving updates, answering questions like I do every summer. I'll have a few of those, but the first one is June 29th. So looking forward to seeing everyone. And that concludes my report.
We'll now move on to business. We have a request for an approval of the salt contract for the 2022-2023 winter. And one moment and I'll get those prices. So according to Director Verba, there is an increase of $6.24 per ton from what we are paying from last year. We do have to order 80% of our estimated quantity per contract and we did have to increase the initial order from 2,100 tons to 2,500 tons based on how much salt we used last winter. With the changes made, we are entitled to purchase at least 2,000 tons of salt at $52.21, which equates to a total contract of $104,420. I'm sorry. Anyone on council have comments or questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
To approve. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Broowski.
Yes.
Under old business tonight, we do have one third reading and adoption, which is Resolution 2022-22, creating the opioid settlement advisory task force to provide guidance on appropriate uses of settlement proceeds from the National Opioid Litigation.
Move to adopt.
Sir.
To adopt. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Broowski.
Yes.
On second reading tonight, we have Resolution 2022-23, adopting the tax budget for the fiscal year 2023. And on our business, new business tonight, we have two ordinances regarding NOPEC. The first is Ordinance 2022-16, approving the plan of operation and governance for the NOPEC Natural Gas Aggregation Program for the purpose of jointly establishing and implementing a gas aggregation program as a NOPEC member and declaring an emergency. And Ordinance 2022-17, authorizing all actions necessary to establish an opt-in natural gas program pursuant to section 4929.27A1, Ohio Revised Code, jointly through NOPEC as a NOPEC member. Ordinance 2022-18 is also on first reading tonight, authorizing the mayor to grant an easement to the city of Cleveland for the installation of a water meter vault necessary to supply water to the city center project. And finally, Ordinance 2022-19 is on first reading tonight, amending section 1519.04 of the Brooklyn Codified Ordinances entitled possession, sale, or discharge prohibited exceptions and declaring an emergency. Does anybody on council, the mayor or directors, have anything to add to the meeting? Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
To adjourn. Meg Ryan Shaki.
Yes.
Andy Selhertz.
Yes.
Kathy Pucci.
Yes.
Aaron Broowski.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.